Good evening and welcome to the January 9, 2024, meeting in the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you for that. Item three is public comment, and we allow 21 minutes for public comment, up to 21 minutes, up to three minutes per speaker. And the way we do it is we go back and forth between the in-person participants and the online participants. In-person participants should come up and sign in, give your name and address, and you'll have up to three minutes, and I'll let you know at 2 minutes and 30 seconds. And the online participants should raise their hands. And how do we raise hand by phone? It's star nine?
They've got one.
Star nine, all right. So star nine if you want to raise your hand by phone. So, public comment. Mr. Milano will count the 21 minutes, and I'll count the three minutes for the speakers. And as I said, I'll let you know at 2 minutes and 30 seconds that you have 30 seconds to go. I apologize for being very strict on the time, but we have to, according to the state law, or the laws interpreted by the courts, we have to be very specific on our timing so that everyone has a fair shot, and no one gets more than anyone else gets. So with that, do we have anyone for public comment here in person?
Mr. Chair, I believe there are some names that were signed.
Oh, we have some. So if we have some signed-up names, maybe, you know, if you can come up and see if you're where you are on the list, and we'll go by where you are on the list.
First on the list. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jeff Wilkinson. I live on Beacon Street in Precinct 10. I'm a Milton resident for over 35 years. I support a yes vote on the February 13 election, and I'm here to ask the Select Board to do everything in your power to assure our voters understand the facts about what's at stake in this election. And please clarify that people can vote yes, even if they signed the petition to put this question on the ballot. I recognize it sounds naive in this political era to insist facts matter, but people should look at the facts when making up their minds about how to vote. If you look at the website of the campaign for a no vote, it's appalling how badly the truth is distorted. For instance, opponents ask rhetorically whether a no vote will threaten funding for schools, and they answer categorically, no. Despite the fact that Governor Healey said specifically on December 7th, quote, "If you don't comply with the Act, then you're going to see us withholding as a state for any money for any number of programs that you're used to receiving money for." That includes for schools, it includes for roads and bridges, and it includes a whole host of things that are important to communities, end quote. It's disingenuous to ignore the governor's pledge. Milton school parents have every right to be concerned about what a no vote would mean for their children in our town, not to mention those of us who drive here. The No Campaign website also complains the state's guidelines were updated last summer and that Brookline and Newton had more time than we did to develop their zoning. In fact, the core state guidelines were released in 2022. We had the same amount of time to comply as everyone else. And the other 11 communities classified, like Milton, have already complied with the law. We had an inclusive planning process in Milton throughout 2023, including 28 Planning Board meetings and eight public forums. Town officials came up with an excellent responsible zoning plan. The opponents never offered an alternative plan, and they still don't have a plan. No is not a plan. Town meeting members carefully studied this zoning in advance and went through the details over two nights of debate. Two-thirds of them agreed to approve the plan that's on the February 13 ballot. They say all's fair in love and war. Well, we all love our town, and we obviously have different visions for the town we want to live in. I want a town where everyone is welcome and where we have options for seniors,
30 seconds, Mr.--
working families, town employees, and small businesses. I want a town that shares responsibility to address the regional housing crisis that threatens our economic future. Milton is not an island. I hope an overwhelming majority of town voters look at the facts and agree with the supermajority of town meeting members. A yes vote is good for Milton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. All right, let's go to our online participants in the order in which their hands are raised. If you could promote Janet Ferrone. She's the first one on the list, Ms. Milano? Is that right?
Yeah.
She's been promoted. I don't see her yet.
Yes, here now.
Hi, I didn't hear what name you called.
Janet Ferrone, or Ferroni?
That's me.
Oh, if you could give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes, and I'll interrupt you briefly at 2 minutes and 30 seconds to let you know that you have 30 seconds to go.
Okay, Janet Ferrone, 71 Central Avenue. And I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 2. And I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the MBTA Act and for voting yes for Milton in the special election on February 13. I'm right near the Central Avenue T, which is really, I use frequently. My 24-year-old son doesn't even have a license because he's always on the T. I'm thinking about the residences across from me, the 36 Central, and I remember the opposition to that multi-unit housing. And now it's really an integral and valued part of our community, especially with the two thriving businesses that added to our much-needed tax base. I'm in support of this act as a senior citizen, getting ready to eventually downsize and looking for more affordable housing, which would be allowed under this zoning. But this act would not actually require any housing, just the zoning that would put us in compliance with no actual housing built. I agree with the previous speaker that there's been so much misinformation about that. And I've been speaking to folks who did sign the petition and who've now really educated themselves, and people, you know, have been switching their vote on that. What I'd like to say about this is that being out of compliance with the Act, again, as the previous speaker said, the governor has been very clear that the governor expects the laws of the Commonwealth to be followed, and funding will be cut. The other thing is, if we vote against this, the local control is taken away. We would not have the ability to participate in this, and the state could come down and demand that we do certain things, not in the way that we would want to do. So I really encourage everyone to check out the Yes for Milton website. You, as the board, to really think about what this would mean for Milton, for us to be breaking the law, losing funds, incurring legal fees. Every other community, Brookline, so many--
30 seconds, Ms. Ferrone.
Sure, have voted yes on this. And I think it would be a travesty if we let a group of folks who are misrepresenting talk us into being out of compliance and losing needed funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrone. Going to the in-person list, Elizabeth Dillon. If you all want to come up and stand behind her, you can do that.
Sure. I brought everybody.
What's that?
You gonna tell me when I'm starting? I brought everybody.
Yes, I won't. Yes, I haven't started the clock. I haven't started the clock yet. No, no, we'll let people get behind you--
I brought everybody.
--before we start the clock.
Okay, thank you.
Don't be afraid. Come forward, there's gonna be a picture. It'll be in the paper.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay.
All right. Everybody comfortable? All right, the clock will start now.
Hi, it's Elizabeth Dillon, Governor's Road. Good evening. Today, I and all these people behind me, residents of Governor's Road, request your help with traffic relief and ask you to put R straight on your agenda for the next board meeting. Speed, volume, and aggression haunt the neighbors on Governor's Road. Our fight began over 46 years ago in 1978 and continues today. For 42 of those years, I did not live here. But I do now, and I will never stop until this problem is resolved. In 2020, the Traffic Mitigation Committee issued a report including a neighbor's concerns that traffic does not wait for stopped school buses at bus stops. The neighbor described it as, quote, "A clash of kids and cars trying to get through the intersection." On October 2, 2023, I emailed town employees with the same concern because my husband witnessed a car go around a parked school bus at a school bus stop with the stop sign out very nearly hitting young children. As the Traffic Mitigation Committee noted, the vast majority of traffic on Governors is cut through, not Milton residents, with speeds of up to 69 miles an hour. The Traffic Mitigation Committee noted that while 22% of drivers are speeding, police enforcement alone is not enough. Recently, Beta Engineering stated that 23% are still speeding. The problem has not gotten better, and with increased volume, has actually gotten worse. There are thousands of cars every week, and there are very few tickets because the police cannot do it alone. Our neighbors have been physically threatened with bodily harm in front of their children. They have had trash thrown on their property. And during our Christmas caroling on December 15, 39 children, I counted, were crossing the road under the supervision of adults, including three adults directing traffic with flashlights. A driver refused to wait and drove through and around the crowd of 39 children. In the same Traffic Mitigation Committee report from 2020, our neighbor behind me, Ryan Mulcahy, requested speed bumps. On January 19, 2023, after conducting a survey of every resident of Governor's Road, I also requested speed bumps or any other mitigation. Notably, in 2010, the Select Board asked the Traffic Commission to explore mitigation, including speed bumps. In its report, the Traffic Mitigation Committee repeatedly noted residents concerned that a child would get run over. As the mother of a three- and five-year-old and the neighbor of 60 children on Governor's Road, including these two behind me, from edgehill to edgehill, I can't let this happen.
30 seconds, Ms. Dillon.
Thank you. I believe that you, the current Select Board, will help us. I know you will. And therefore, I ask you to place us as a formal agenda item at the next Select Board meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Dillon. Thank you, everyone. All right, let's go to the online hands. The next hand up in line is John Cahane. If you could promote Mr. Cahane.
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Cahane, go ahead.
Hi, my name's John Cahane. I live on 73 Yanceford Street. Husband, father, grandfather, town meeting member, precinct 7, and East Milton Neighborhood Association Board member. I am in favor of the intent of the MBTA Communities Act to provide climate-friendly, affordable housing. But I am voting no because I am convinced that our planned response, Article 1, will do neither. I am new at town politics, and the last town meeting left me feeling uneasy. We are all in this for the good of the town. We should be sympathetic to those who do not achieve what they felt was best for the town. To me, it felt like an us-versus-them argument when we're all in this together. I form my opinion over a lifetime with regards to climate change and the threat to my children and grandchildren, and with regards to affordable housing, most recently by learning the threat that it is to our state and locally, and by attending multiple forums. And I heard over and over how this area and that area will never be built because of newly constructed units or unfeasible financially, or the state owns the property, et cetera. The draft of this Act can walk away saying, "Look what I did to support climate-friendly, affordable housing," knowing full well neither will happen. Politics as usual. How is it that a plan can meet the requirements of a climate-friendly, affordable housing act while it has been stated outright on video that this area and that area won't be built upon for various stated reasons? And yet, the plan is okay? That is why I am challenging it. Yes, unfortunately, there are those among us who want to outright stop the plan, but they are in the minority, just as there are those among you with less-than-honorable reasons for supporting it. Again, that's politics. And this is where breaking the law is a little overdone. We're not meeting a deadline. We fully intend to meet the law. We're not fighting it, we're making it better. And those who want to come at us, I say, bring it on and prepare a good defense for why a plan that won't meet the goals is acceptable. And I can go on. I thank everyone who worked on this plan for putting it together, and I think you achieved the desired result, compliance with minimal impact on the town. And the Act allowed you to do this. But unfortunately, the claimed objectives are unlikely to be met.
30 seconds, Mr. Cahane. 30 seconds, sir.
30 seconds, yep. And so we need a new directive. And that is to not comply with a badly-written act but to actually provide climate-friendly, affordable housing. If I've said it over and over, it's because that's what this is about. I ask those sections in town not impacted by this to support those of us who are and vote no on February 13 and support us again in May when we bring forth a plan that provides a better chance at climate-friendly, affordable housing while also addressing infrastructure costs, traffic, the impact on housing apartments. It's no small feat, but our effort will not stop until it's done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, let's go next to the in-person list. Chad Trevary? Did I pronounce it right? Chad Trevary from Governor's Road?
Thank you very much. Hi, everyone. My name is Chad Trevary. I live at 130 Governor's Road in Milton. And I'm here to talk about the same traffic issues that Liz did. Admittedly, it's a tough act to follow, but I will try and do my best. Instead of an emotional plea, though, I'd like to give some data that we have from our road. About 50 yards from the end of our road, we have one of those speed signs that also records your sign and flashes it to you. Those signs also record data from the vehicles that go by it. Slightly before COVID, I had requested from the town a year's worth of data. And looking through that data, we found some very interesting things, such as, as Liz mentioned, the maximum speed that was recorded was 69 miles an hour. That is on a 25 mile-per-hour road. But more importantly, the average max speed per week is between 40 and 45 miles per hour, meaning that this is not a one-time occurrence of some drunken idiot going down our roads. This is happening every single day of every single week. Moreover, Monday through Friday, while my data is a little bit different than what Liz had said, 40%, close to 40% of the traffic is considered a, quote, "violation." Violation, I'm assuming, means greater than 25 miles per hour. And as many of my neighbors have noted here, that seems reasonable, unfortunately. Now, those numbers do drop off a little bit around the weekends because, again, as noted, these are not Milton residents that are using these roads inappropriately. We care about our children. The biggest surprise, though, is that weekly we have over 11,000 visitors. And if you do the math, that is more than one car a day, every single minute of every single day, including weekends, including 3:00 in the morning. So it is a volume issue as well as a speed issue. So you've already heard the emotional plea. This is just some of the data. I'd be happy to update it at any time, but just to give you some facts and numbers around what we're talking about. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Trevary. All right, let's go next to online. And it's a telephone number, 794. If you could, I think you just muted yourself. If someone muted you. We're gonna promote you, and then if you could unmute yourself and give your name and address. And then you'll have three minutes, and I'll give you a heads up at 2 minutes and 30 seconds.
Hi, it's Kathleen O'Donnell from 12 Belcher Circle. Town meeting member, precinct 7. I'm calling in because I couldn't raise my hand on Zoom for some reason. And I would just like to speak briefly with respect to the yes-for-Milton vote and the MBTA zoning. I have heard from various meetings that people have concerns that the MBTA zoning will keep the town from meeting its 10% threshold to fight off 40Bs. This concern wasn't raised when ADA work was built or when the governor's stone trustees sold the town farm to Pulte, nor when any number of small subdivisions have been approved throughout the town. It's important to remember that every market dwelling that we build pushes us farther away from that magic 10% threshold. I serve as special counsel to the Board of Appeals on two 40B projects, and I have assisted Boards of Appeals throughout the Commonwealth on developing permitting for 40B projects. I also served on the Governor's Task Force on 40Bs several decades ago, as it turns out. But I can say from my experience that 40B projects is usually a developer's last choice. The profits are limited, the expenses are high, the permitting costs are high, the permitting process is lengthy, and even if you get the permit, you have the 50/50 chance of a lawsuit at the end. So it's not somebody's first choice. It's usually picked because the developer has no other opportunities. As in Milton, we don't allow multifamily zoning in any place unless we have developed a special zoning for that. So a developer isn't gonna use it unless they absolutely have to. The MBTA zoning gives us the chance to place multifamily housing where it makes sense, not next to Falmouth in the Blue Hills, not backed up to a cliff behind the DPW yard and any other crazy locations that people have come up with lately. So any smart developer would pick the certainty of zoning as a right, even with, by plan review and the design standards that are included in our zoning, over the tortured process of a 40B application. And the process is much more attractive to nonprofit organizations. It's much more cost-effective to do zoning as a right. As we have even our own example here, the Hendry's plant, Hendry's got a 40B permit relatively quickly, actually, and he decided not to use it.
30 seconds, Ms. O'Donnell. Ms. O'Donnell, 30 seconds?
I'm done. I just want to say that a yes vote provides the opportunity in this town for more types of housing, for more cost points, and won't have the dreaded fear of a 40B project. You could place it where it makes sense and not where a developer is forced to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. Let's go back to the in-person list. Mr. Mark Croninger?
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for giving me the time.
Good evening.
I just wanted to tell my friend--
32 Melbourne--
Oh, 32 Melbourne Road, that's right. Yeah, I forget.
That's right.
Tired.
No, I know. So are we all.
It's wet. I urge people to vote no on question 1 on February 13. I am not a stick in the mud. I'm not somebody opposed to new affordable housing coming into town. I live on the east side of town. It is an absolute nightmare over there, okay? And the folks here on Governor's Road, which it sounds like you're probably gonna be hearing more from in the future, they think they got it bad now. Wait till we dump over half of this whole project into that area of town. The dark horse in the room that's not even mentioned is the Falconi monstrosity, the six-story skyscraper 40B assumed to be looming over our neighborhood and shadowing everything in the general vicinity. I can't even believe we got to this point. How, I've lived here for 26 years, raised my sons in Milton Public Schools, and prior to that, I lived in Brighton for many years. And I'm very familiar with Arlington, Belmont, Melrose, and the city. How, in God's sake, did we not get taken off the list, the original 18 towns? If Arlington can get off the list, and Belmont can get off the list, and Melrose can get off the list with much more robust MBTA presences, they actually do have subways there, not just historical trolleys. They actually have commuter rails that run into those towns. They have thousands and thousands of people that use the MBTA every day, much more so than here. And yet, for some reason, Milton didn't get off the thing. I remember Mr. Zulis said on the last meeting that we'd sent a letter. I applaud select person Wells and select person Musto for not looking to pass this on as it was because there was some stink to it. Well, in my experience, in 40 years in business, sending a letter is the beginning of a discussion and a dialogue, not the end. Somehow, people in these other towns that are much more city towns than this town is got us repealed. I think any efforts the Select Committee should be making going forward, instead of lobbying to get this passed, is to get back in front of these people, get lawyers, and have a zone down to a proper thing, which would be an adjacent zoning thing, an adjacent zoning designation. I also keep hearing how town meeting voted overwhelmingly for this. I attended that meeting. I'm not a town meeting member. They did. I also heard that dozens and dozens of people didn't even show up to cast a vote. I think I read that in The Times. So that being said, maybe--
30 seconds, Mr.--
maybe they didn't have the same impact that some of us will, and they felt maybe it was a better time to wrap Christmas presents or something. I invite all of you who don't live in our part of town to go get on Granite Ave in the morning, get on Squanum, see how long it takes you to get around. And to say that you can walk from the DPW area down Granite to get to the trolley, that's a joke. Go do it. I did it. I almost thought I was gonna be killed about seven times. And that doesn't include running across the on-ramp from 93. So--
Thank you, Mr.--
That's false. In any event, vote no. Thanks, everybody, for listening. Appreciate the time. Stay dry.
Thank you, sir. All right, let's go now to the next-- how much time do we have left, Mr. Milano? The 21 minutes? One minute left? Oh, all right. So we'll have an abbreviated time period for Tucker. So if you could promote Tucker. And if you could give your name and address. And unfortunately, you'll just have one minute because we have one minute to go on public comment.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear. And unfortunately, we just have a minute to go, so if you could maybe.
Okay, I'll talk fast.
Okay, great.
All right, my name is Tucker Smith. I am soon to be 45 years as a homeowner at 1632 Canton Avenue. I wanted to step forward as a Milton resident and raise the fact that the D O E R, Mass Department of Energy Resources, has created an opt-in specialized building code. Adopting this code would require approval by the May 6 Town Meeting to take effect. And Alex Hasha of Sustainable Milton will be introducing that topic tonight for your approval, I hope, as a draft warrant article for the May 6 Town Meeting. The purpose of every building code is to protect health, safety, and welfare of inhabitants. New building code is a powerful tool with the potential to transform a structure from polluting to protecting and climate mitigating. This is especially important with the potential, again, it is contentious, but of new housing stock to be created by the MBTA community zoning.
Thank you, Tucker. Thank you. I apologize, but that's.
No problem. Thank you for, thank you for listening.
For all the other people, we had another person on the list here. We had a couple of other people with their hands up. So I apologize, we've run out of time for public comment, but we will have our next meeting on the 23rd, next meeting on the 23rd, so please, please come then, and hopefully we can, we can hear from you then. All right? And also, we all have emails, and feel free to send us emails with all your thoughts and comments, and we'll certainly, certainly take those into account. So thank you all. All right, item four, discussion approval of the warrant for the special town meeting on February 13, 2024, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., regarding Article 1 from the December 4, 2023 Special Town Meeting, in accordance with Section 7 of the Town Charter. Why don't we go to Mr. Milano on that?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. For any election or town meeting, the Select Board has to vote to approve a warrant, and that is what we have drafted and put in your packets this evening. This warrant includes, as the Chair noted, the date of the ballot question vote, which will be February 13. Polls will open at 7:00 a.m. They will close at 8:00 p.m. The voting locations will be the regular voting locations in use at any normal town election or state election. The warrant also includes the question that will be appearing in the warrant and on everyone's ballot when they go to vote. And also note that the warrant states that Article 1, as it was printed in the warrant for the Town Meeting, will be available at each of the polling locations, the Town Clerk's office, and on the website. So folks who are interested in reviewing that, when they get to the polling location, will be able to do so. And, Mr. Chair, I'll just note that we recommend one minor change to the question. It's in towards, so the fifth line up. It says, "as printed in the warrant for the December 2023 Special Town Meeting." We recommend adding the language "as printed" as Article 1 in the warrant for the December 2023 Special Town Meeting, just to give clarity to voters when they're reading the question, that we're talking about Article 1 here, just to further make it very obvious. And otherwise, this has been reviewed by Town Council, and it's good to go, and we'll post the warrant tomorrow and get it up on the website and elsewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Comments or questions, Ms. Bradley?
So the last time that we left this, thank you, Mr. Milano, for that, but the last time that we left this, it was my understanding that we had to wait and get a court order to extend the hours. I'm wondering if that happened?
Based on Town Council's further review, it's not necessarily, there are conflicting statutes involved. The Charter says 2 to 8:00 p.m., and there is a provision in state law that allows the Select Board to set the hours for elections for ballot questions. So based on that conflict, we, Town Council has advised that proceed post the warrant with hours of 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. There's that statutory authority, and there'll be ample notice for everybody to understand what those hours will be. He, Town Council still has the time to seek a court decision if he feels that's necessary. But by posting the warrant, we're publicly announcing what the hours of the election will be, what the date will be, and what the question will be.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure that we were in compliance with whatever that decision was. So thank you for that.
Other, Mr. Zull?
Thank you, Mr. Zulis.
You've got your name after two weeks, Mr. Zull.
It's all right. It's a new year. Thanks, Mr. Milano, for putting this together. So just a quick question from me. My understanding is that each polling place is going to have a copy of the entire article for review, and I wonder if the ballot question should allude to the fact that that is also available at the polling place?
So it's stated as such in the warrant, and I'll just add that we plan to have ample copies, so there won't be a single copy at each polling location, but many copies available. I don't think the question, I don't know the answer to that one. I don't think it was necessary as it was being referenced and will be in discussions with the Town Clerk. I believe my understanding is they will offer it when the ballot is offered.
Okay. I hope when you have the discussions with the Town Clerk, if they could be, if the staff, the incredible volunteers who help make democracy possible and who are providing extra work for us this year, if they could be instructed to sort of make sure that they do offer that as frequently as possible. I think everyone coming into the polls should know that they have the opportunity to review this incredibly detailed, incredibly well-thought-out and crafted plan. I think that's, it's important for folks to know that it's available to look at.
Sure. No, that's certainly our intention.
Great. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Let's see, Mr. Wells, are you all set? I think he is. Yes. Great. All right, so does someone want to make a motion to approve this warrant?
Sure. I'll move to approve the warrant for the special town meeting on February 13, 2024, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., regarding Article 1 from the December 4, 2023 Special Town Meeting, in accordance with Section 7 of the Town Charter.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, this will be a roll call vote. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zull?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis, yes. Thank you. Item five, discussion State's response to Milton status with respect to compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. I'll lead off on this, and maybe Mr. Milano can fill in. The Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and the Attorney General's Office reached out to the town, Mr. Milano, Mr. Mello, and then I was asked to participate last Tuesday, January 2, for a Zoom meeting about the town's status with respect to the MBTA Communities Act. And that led to, that conversation Zoom meeting led to the email that Mr. Milano has circulated to the board that was sent to me and Mr. Milano from the Acting Director of the Community Services Division of the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. The email, as you all see, has had a clarification of the deadline, was actually 11:59 and 59 seconds p.m. on January 2, 2024, because of the holiday. The email recognized the town's, what they call, "unique situation," given that Town Meeting had approved a zoning in compliance or potentially in compliance with the law, but that due to the petition, there will be an election on February 13. The email noted some of the efforts that the town has made over the last year on behalf of the Act. And then, in primary part, the email stated, "Due to the significant actions taken by the town to comply with the law, and recognizing the bind the town is in relative to the timing of the referendum spelled out in the Town Charter, E O H L C will refrain from taking legal action to enforce compliance with the MBTA communities law if the town takes the following actions." The first was, prior to the expiration of the deadline at 11:59 p.m. on January 2, 2024, providing E O H L C with the materials related to the zoning that was adopted at Town Meeting, and the materials that the town had in hand. And two, providing a letter from this board, the Select Board, prior to the close of business on January 11, confirming that the town would submit a compliance application under the MBTA communities law. And the email was incorrect. It said, "Should the ballot vote fail?" I think the intention of the writer was, from E O H L C, was, "Should the zoning pass on February 13?" So the sum and substance is, it's up to this board, and you have a draft letter, and that's item six. But why don't we, before we get to item six, why don't we have comments and questions? Mr. Milano, you can fill in anything that I may have missed on.
No, only to add that, based on their request that we send in any information related to the zoning passed by Town Meeting, I did provide that information to H L C. Basically, the text of the zoning law that was in the warrants, the zoning map amendments, and then there's additional backup related to the compliance model that we've talked a lot about. So the compliance model was sent in as well with those materials. So it's the zoning bylaw, the map, and additional backup related to the compliance model and spreadsheets that our consultants had been working on over the past few months.
Comments or questions on item five? Ms. Musto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering if Mr. Milano could comment on this letter that we just received this afternoon around 3:00. I'm just looking at it now. I don't know if you had a chance to read it and could.
Yep.
Because I'm reading it right now.
This is from Mr. Mello?
Well, there's two different ones. We should talk about the one from Mr. Mello. But there's also, yeah, this one.
This one that's in front of us.
Yeah, that we just got.
Oh.
Did you see that one, Mike?
There was a copy left there, Mike, for you. So that came out at like 6:15.
Oh, I didn't see, I didn't even see this. I didn't even know we'd get this. All right.
Do you want to talk about what Mr. Mello said first, and then this? It's fine.
No, no, I don't think actually Mr. Mello's memo is technically on the agenda, because this item is State's response.
Okay.
So this is State's response.
Okay, correct, sure.
So we can certainly talk about this.
Sure.
And I'll try to read it quickly while you talk to Mr. Milano.
Yes, so the, we received that shortly before the meeting from the Secretary of Housing and Livable Communities at Augustus, spelling out some of the grant programs and other funding sources that are at risk if the town is noncompliant. I'll note that the Secretary had sent a letter, a similar letter to the City of Newton when it was finalizing its MBTA compliance zoning. So it seems to be an action that the state has been taking just to reach out to communities to remind them of the obligations under the Act, and apprised them of the community status, and then what would happen if the town is noncompliant. The Secretary notes the Attorney General's comments, notes some of the Mass Works, Housing Works, and other housing choice grants that the town has received funding from before, that the town would be at risk of not having, not receiving money from those grants moving forward. I think that's an overall summary of the letter that the town has received. And we'll certainly post that on the MBTA Communities website, so folks can see it.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Zull?
I think it's important to point out that in this, the January 9 letter from Secretary Augustus, he points out that Milton is the only MBTA community that has not followed the law at this point. And I think the, you know, it's a pretty incredible situation that we're in, and I feel that the state is being relatively patient with us as we go through this longer process of a referendum. But it is extraordinary that we're having an election that would result in loss of funding for this town, this town to be out of compliance with state law. There's nothing in this letter, but we know that the Attorney General has suggested that towns that are in violation will be subjected to lawsuits, potentially civil rights lawsuits, and the immense costs that this town is going to incur if a no vote passes. So I, I'm glad to see that the state is giving us a bit of flexibility to have this election. I think it's just important to note that we're the only town that hasn't done this, that the only MBTA community that has failed. And as speakers during Citizen Speak pointed out, and I know we'll respond to those later, it's not by lack of effort on this town. The incredible effort from members of the Planning Board, from members of this body, from the town staff, from what's cited in this letter, multiple, you know, significant funds brought forward by the state to help us pass this. I, it's still shocking to me that we're having this discussion, that we've decided that we might, as a town, decide to reject law and subject our citizens in our town to financial, legal, and other result of a no vote. So I just, I can't state strongly enough how incredible this situation is, and I know we'll talk more about this later, but I am glad that the Commonwealth is giving us time to have this election, which we're going to, which we're going to do. But I really hope that everyone in town understands the strong consequences of noncompliance here.
Other comments or questions, Ms. Bradley?
Thank you so much. I was already on. So I just want to say a few things. One, while I applaud everything that my colleague said, Mr. Zull said, I would just like to say that we didn't fail. Milton didn't fail. The Town Meeting members who were elected to represent this town in all precincts had a vote. They did what they're constitutionally and by our bylaws and charter were supposed to do. So they upheld their duty. They voted 2/3 in favor of the plan that was presented in front of them. So I would like to say that we didn't fail. What is happening right now is a unique situation that hasn't happened since before I was born, which I'm going to tell you guys is a long time ago. And it's really interesting that folks in our town believe that this is the best course of action for the entire town of Milton. I've sat through many, many, many meetings where members of this board have told me to represent the entire town. And I would just like to say that 66% of those that were elected voted in favor of this. That, to me, is a majority of the town. Town members have every right to come out and vote. You can get rid of Town Meeting members, you can get rid of us, you can get rid of whomever you'd like. That's the wonderful power of this country. But these are the folks that were elected, these are the folks that were there, and they did their due diligence. The interesting part to me in this letter, and Mr. Zulis has this letter, so I'm not going to. No, 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 it's fine. I'm not going to quote it directly, but there has been talk about how this will not impact the town of Milton much beyond $10,000, $20,000 that we won't get. In this letter, it states that last year alone, we got $120,000 in grants. These grants have to do with community, sorry, I'm old, really, have to do with community planning and all the zoning language. That's what these grants are that we got. We currently are dealing with a grant over at Chickataby. Is that grant going to be clawed back? The governor yesterday came out with a bunch of 9C cuts, and for those of you that don't know what those are, that's what she can do when we are not within our budget as a state. Any earmark, any amount of money that is not required by the federal law or state law can be cut. And so the Economic Development Grant that we were talking about, using somebody to think about how we can move our town forward, we may not get that. Anything that our delegation gets on the state level, we may not get that. Anything that we currently have, that we're currently using, that can be clawed back. And so there's a lot bigger ramifications than just $20,000 on this table, and this letter says it. And I just want to thank Senator Augustus. I worked with him when he was a senator for Worcester, a great man. And I want to thank him for doing his due diligence and sending this letter to us today. I wish it was a little day earlier, but I thank him for it today. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I think a lot of things have been said today. We had a lot of people come and speak to us, residents on both sides of this issue. We represent, as my colleague has said, we represent all of the town, all of the residents. If people feel strongly about this issue and want to have a vote on this, that's part of the democratic process, too. So we have Town Meeting that's democratic. This is another democratic process. As far as doing our due diligence and, you know, feeling that we did not fail the residents, I think we have, because, again, we sent letters. They weren't that strong, and certainly, I know that Mr. Zulis, our Chair, has referenced one of the letters at one of our previous meetings. But that letter, that initial letter, was worked on by the Planning Board and yourself, and I believe Tim Chuensky. It had some history in it. It was a great letter. It really was a great letter. We altered that letter, and there was a lot of discussion about that. And then subsequent letters, again, you know, did not ask for reclassification. And so I think that when people say, or the message out there is that we did our best, no, we did not do our best. Our best doesn't stop unless we give it 100% effort in doing our best. Now, you and I will differ on that, Mr. Chair, and that's okay. That's part of democracy, too. But we represent everybody. We need to do what's best for everybody in the community. As far as the letter, I do want to read this part about the consequences of noncompliance. But I do want to reference it, back up and say, nobody's out there saying we're not going to be compliant. We want to do the best we can do for the residents in this town. In rushing an article just to say, okay, we got it in by the, by the.
It's not rushed. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, but please don't interrupt me.
It's okay.
Mr. Zull, please don't interrupt me.
It's all right. It's all right. Ms. Musto?
I would like a little more respect than that, please. Thank you.
Okay, please stick to the facts.
I am sticking to the facts, Mr. Zull, please.
Thank you.
Ms. Musto, go ahead, Ms. Musto.
We have to be truthful, okay?
Please be truthful.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair? I'm not going to tolerate that behavior. That's disrespectful of me. Okay?
Mr. Zoll.
I'm done.
All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Musto.
We have an obligation to do what's best for the residents in this town. And this is where we, I guess, will differ on those letters. But now we're at a different point in time, right? We're at a point in time where there is a vote that's coming up, and people should exercise their vote. From this letter that Ms. Bradley was referencing, I'd like to reference something from it, please. Okay. And I will, again, preface it by saying that people do want to do the right thing and get this right for the town. So I don't think, personally, that's what I would like to see, is what's right for the town and what we should rightly do. As far as consequences of noncompliance, the Attorney General advised communities' compliance with the MBTA communities' law as mandatory. And the law, as stated, is a district of reasonable size, 15 units per acre. That's part of what is the law. By statute, compliance is prerequisite to, is a prerequisite to receive Mass Works Housing Grants, Housing Choice Grants. Milton has benefited from these grant programs in the past. In 2023, Milton received $30,000 Community Planning Grant to fund planning activities for MBTA communities' law compliance. Milton also received a $30,000 Community Planning Grant to draft zoning language for MBTA communities' law compliance. In 2021, Milton received $60,000 from EOHLC, which was then DHCD, in consultant services to assist businesses recover from impacts of COVID-19 pandemic through the local Rapid Recovery Program. Municipalities that are not compliant with MBTA communities will have a strong competitive advantage, that are compliant with MBTA communities, will have a strong competitive advantage in all of the capital programs offered by EOHLC, as well as other grants that are part of the Community One Stop for Growth Consolidated Grant Programs. And then it lists them, several. And then it says, while noncompliance is not an absolute bar to participation in these additional programs, in general, an application by a noncompliant community is unlikely to be selected for funding absent extraordinary circumstances. I think there will be an effort to do the right thing and get some zoning that's appropriate for this town. Anybody that's sitting there and is that angry at me for saying what I said, I really wonder where this is all coming from. I'm trying to say what is in the letter, which is the truth, and I'm trying to say what has happened up to now. Those letters that we have written, there's one on the website, and I would ask Mr. Milano to please put our other letters up on the website, not just on the Planning Board website, but on our website, including this letter and anything else that we have for documentation. Thank you.
Well, let's keep what Mr. Wells, Ms. Bradley, and then Mr. Zoll.
Just real quick. I just, I agree with you, Roxanne, I'm sorry, Ms. Musto, that things should be up on the website. My concern is that it's going to get confusing if they're in different spots. So I just want to make sure that when folks go to our website, because I'm kind of anal about this, as you know, they go to a place and they're able to access all the information, and they don't have to figure out where it is. So I applaud what you just said about putting it up there. I just want to make sure it's in the right place. That's all. Sorry.
Mr. Zoll.
Ms. Musto, I'm not angry with you. What I'm angry with is a small group of citizens in this town who are, seem hell-bent on twisting the facts, lying, putting up anonymous videos on the internet, taking out of context quotes to make it seem like someone's saying something that they're not saying. The no on this has been categorically and unequivocally full of miss and disinformation. And so what makes me angry is when I hear miss and disinformation that comes here to this table, because this is the place where we should be truthful and honest about what's happened. And we have heard you and other members, well, not you other members, but you, Ms. Musto, and others suggest that there was somehow something nefarious or different or that we have not done our full, we did not fulfill our full obligations to the town, particularly when it comes to this letter, which I, yes, proposed some edits to. The edits that I proposed, you know, honestly, if I was a member of this small no faction, I would, I think, upon reflection, had appreciated the fact that I took out references to decisions that were made by this town in the 1960s, in the 1970s, that were grounded in structural racism. There's just no way to put finer point on it than that. We know, in this town, across the Commonwealth and across the nation, decisions about infrastructure and zoning were made in a basis of structural racism. And I don't think it behooves anyone to drag up talking points from those eras to try to make a point. There was a 1930 map of the MBTA, of the MBTA in the Boston metro area that actually identified the Matapan High Speed Trolley as rapid transit. So I think we can go back and pick and choose from our historical documents what we want to try to make our case about. But what seems very clear, very clear, from the comments that we've heard tonight, from what we've seen online, is that there is a group of citizens who are bent on noncompliance. And you can say that you don't mean to be noncompliant, but a no vote is a vote for noncompliance. That's just as simple as it can be. And the last thing that I want to say about this, and I don't want to go on for too long, but if you think a no vote is going to stop developers and state from imposing upon us standards that do not meet what we would like to say, that do not get the input of Milton citizens, that is what's going to happen with a no vote. We are going to see exactly what's happened with 40B happen in this town. It's a lesson that we simply haven't learned. And I take heart tonight from hearing from our neighbors on Governor's Road who feel like this select board finally is maybe in a position to make a difference for their traffic issues. I think they see us taking action on things like building an animal shelter that has been long neglected, on things like getting us up to par where we need to be on affordable housing, on securing land at no cost for a new school. We have made incredible progress on this board. And that scares some people, because for a long time, the party of no has ruled Milton and has prevented us from following state law and has subjected us to penalties. And that's why we have 40B housing going up when people are, when people get upset about it. If you're upset about 40B housing, or if you're upset that, if you think that a no vote is going to somehow magically make a state law disappear, make the courts disappear, make developers disappear, then good luck and God bless. We live in one of the best towns in the world. We are adjacent to one of the best cities in the world. Many of us have chosen to live here because we are adjacent to Boston, which is a dynamic, thriving city with a dynamic, thriving economy. And if we're tired of cut-through traffic, then why aren't we building traffic that's closer, why aren't we building housing that's closer to Boston so people can't cut through? The folks on Governor's Road are talking about cut-through traffic from people that don't live in Milton. People that don't live in Milton, yes, they probably don't care as much about our kids. You'd like to think that they care about kids, but it sounds like some of them don't. Why aren't we looking at this? So the idea that some of us are angry, yes, because we have been subjected to lies, we have been subjected to ridicule, we have been subjected to attacks, and we love this town just as much as anybody else. I've heard it said that just because you're a no vote doesn't mean you're not a good person. Well, just because you're a yes vote doesn't mean that you're not a good person. It means that you're whatever kind of person, but it's your person who's done their homework and understands the consequences of a no or yes vote. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. And I may be getting a little far afield from the agenda item, which is the state's response to the compliance, but Ms. Musto, please go ahead.
Thank you. I feel that I have to respond to some things that were said. Not everybody's nefarious. Not everybody is bad or good. Making assumptions about people because of their beliefs, whether they're for this or not for this, on the yes side or the no side, is terrible. We're all residents of the town. And to categorize people like that, I think, is appalling. And calling people, almost calling people racist in a way by saying different things is wrong. A no vote, you are making it that it's noncompliance. Well, doing something that will be a better plan for the residents, I think, is what I'm hearing from different people. As far as affordability, if we really wanted to do the right thing, guys, we would have put affordability into this article, okay? We could have put 15% affordability into, we could have gotten a study, we could have done that, but we didn't do it. So what does that mean? That means if things are built, we are going to be further away from our 40B goal. So for all those people that think, oh, this is great, and we don't have to worry about 40B, we will still have to worry about 40B, and maybe in a bigger way, if we don't have more affordability into this article. We had an opportunity to try to do that, and we should have done it. For all the people that think that this is going to meet affordability, this doesn't meet affordability. I think the, what is it, 10%? Boston's doing 17. We could have done better. Those are the types of things I think we could have done better. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Bradley.
So I would like to just address a few things that were just raised. One, I do support affordability, as do many people on this board. Ms. Musto, you did not vote for the affordable housing stuff that's going to be built up on the Governor Stoughton land. I just want to, I just want to say, like, these are facts that we're dealing with. If you want more affordable housing, then you support affordable housing. This has nothing to do with the topic at hand. But since you brought it up.
I will respond to that, too.
I figured you would.
We're trying to keep it, we're trying to keep it.
But I just want to say, you know, and I know you're going to respond, and that's fine. I'm doing this very respectfully, just so you know. And I think that if we're going to talk about affordable housing and talk about it, we have to talk about it, not just the tree that's in front of us, we have to talk about it as the forest that we live in. And so how can we make this work for the best of our ability? The other thing that you brought up, and this is also out of scope, and so I want to ask Mr. Chair, before I say anything, well, I'm going to say something, and then I'm going to ask him if we should continue, but the letter we got from Attorney Mello.
I think we need to have a separate agenda item for that. I don't consider that part of this agenda item.
Because what you brought up, Roxanne, about that we can go back and do this in the main meeting, I don't know that that's real. And so I think that that whole part of it, anything else that we're going to say about coming back and having another plan, I think that that needs to be under that agenda item, Mr. Chair. Does that make sense, how I'm saying that? Okay. I don't want to, I don't want to offend anybody. I just want to say that that whole section, I think, we need to have a more in-depth conversation about. Thank you.
And so just for the people watching, the board received today from town council, I don't know where it is, but received today from town council advice about whether the two-year ban on zoning articles applies. And that's really not, we received it today, it's not on our agenda, but it will find its way onto our next agenda item, and we'll certainly post it on the website. Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I do want to just briefly respond to what Ms. Bradley said about affordable housing. I do support affordable housing. I don't support it over at Town Farm, because I don't think that's the location for it. I don't think that was the, and it's not that, it's really the intent, the intent of what the Governor Stoughton will was. So I don't want to get into that piece of it, but affordable housing, if we can do it throughout the town, different locations, if we bought certain properties and made them into affordable units, that type of thing, I don't think that it meets the criteria for the trust. So that's really why I feel that way. But I do support affordable housing. And as far as the article, I wasn't necessarily thinking that we would, that maybe we would bring it back, but also the Planning Board, I know they've been working on things, so I'm just, I was just, that'll be for the next meeting, but I'm not necessarily the select board. Thank you.
And just to put a point on it, on the affordability, under the guidelines, the affordability percentage can be increased if there's an economic analysis that's done, that is being done, it's not completed yet. And so when it's completed, the 10% affordability can be increased based on the results of that economic analysis. So it certainly can be increased, and, you know, so that's all I'll say with respect to that. And I, I won't, I don't want to get, relitigate all the claims, but I just will say, I think we did the best we could in terms of making the arguments. We were the only ones who made the arguments, and we made them, and we, I think we did the best we could, but reasonable people can differ on that, certainly. So, all right. Is there anything else on that? I'm not seeing anything, Mr. Wel. So Item 6 is Discussion Approval Letter to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities in Response to HLC's Request for Information with Respect to Compliance. So, with the MBTA Communities Act. So, in the email that we received last week and in the letter that we just received today from Secretary Augustus, the agency is saying that, and this is in the letter, if the referendum upholds the adoption of the plan, and if on January 11, 2024, the Select Board confirms to EOHLC in writing of its intent to promptly submit a district compliance application, EOHLC is prepared to exercise its discretion to excuse the town's failure to meet the application deadline. If not, EOHLC expects to find the town noncompliant without further delay. So what we can do tonight is send in a letter along the lines of what we have before you in your packets to 8EOHLC before January 11, saying that if the voters vote to approve the zoning article on February 13, then the town will submit its application. And again, we would be sending this letter to EOHLC in order to, in order to meet their requirement that we do so, so they will not find us noncompliant prior to our February 13 election. So, comments or questions? Mr. Zoll.
MATV, guys, for running, yelling at me. Just a very small typo, I think, the second paragraph, the first line, signed into law the governor, I think it's by the governor.
Yep.
And then I'm just wondering if we're obligated to provide a timeline for when we're going to submit after the voters vote yes?
Well, I.
It didn't look like it from the letter.
I don't see anything in the email or in the letter. It just, no, 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 no. So the idea was, there were two aspects of their, of their excusing us until after the election. The first is Mr. Milano sent in the materials prior to 11:59 PM on January 2, which he did, I think, about 8:30 that night. And then the second is, if we send a letter saying, if the voters vote to support the zoning on February 13, then the town will submit the application. But I don't believe there is any requirement in the email that we say we'll do it by, or in the letter that would say we'll do it by a particular time. I just, my understanding is, we just need to say we're going to do it, and then they'll, and then they will, as the secretary says, excuse the town's failure to meet the application deadline until after, yeah, until after the election. That's, the letter says.
I don't remember.
Yeah, the letter says, if, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. I didn't have it.
You didn't know the letter.
So promptly, it says, we have to promptly submit. So maybe we would amend the letter.
Maybe we want to put promptly in our.
Say promptly, we'll promptly submit, and then the town will promptly submit a completed district compliance application.
That makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So those are the two requirements in order for them, in order for EOHLC to refrain from taking legal action to enforce compliance. So that's what they said. They said, if you do these things, send the materials and send this letter, then EOHLC will refrain from taking legal action to enforce compliance with the MBTA communities' law until after the election.
Can I make up one more very vain suggestion?
Vain?
Everybody gets to use their middle initial, except I don't, for some reason, my middle initial isn't there.
Well, what is it?
It's D for David.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. We'll make sure that that.
For my dad.
Lynn, have we got that?
It's his birthday today.
Oh, it's your dad, okay. All right. Roxanne, do you have a middle initial that you want to put in there? I don't see one for. I don't see one for you.
What, does everybody else have one?
Everyone else has one.
That will be everyone.
F, all right. What does F stand for?
Don't ask that.
No.
Oh, I don't have to ask.
No, don't ask that. I know, I got you.
I can tell you mine. It's not, it's Fred. It's not Frederick, it's Fred.
Just Fred.
Just Fred, yeah. I always blame my, yeah. All right, so we won't, all right, so we got Roxanne.
Here's just G.
Roxanne F. Musto and Benjamin DeZol. So the changes we're adding by first line of the second paragraph, and then we're, we're going to, on the penultimate paragraph, where we, in the town's response, we'll say then the town will promptly submit a completed district compliance application. And that's, you know, presuming there's a, a, a yes vote. If there's a no vote, then we, we say if there's a no vote, then we will not submit the completed application. So other comments or questions on the letter?
I'll make a motion to approve the letter if nobody else has a comment.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, this is a roll call, vote Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Zoll.
Yes.
Ms. Zoll is yes, okay. So we'll get that out tomorrow and, and then we'll, we'll be good to go with that. Item seven, discussion update approval of the request by Sustainable Milton with respect to opt-in specialized building code and a potential warrant article for that. I believe we have Mr. Hasha here from Sustainable Milton. And if you want to, if you want to describe this for us, Mr. Hasha, that would be most helpful.
Sure. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be able to be here. This is my first time in the room, though I've seen it on TV before. And so I prepared a short statement because I wasn't sure if I'd be at Citizen Speak and many more than three minutes, probably more than people want at this point. So I'll just read that for you. So I'm here on behalf of the Sustainable Milton's Board to request that the select board add an article to the town meeting warrant adopting the opt-in specialized building code. Our board voted unanimously for this because it is a critical step to do our part as a town to slow down climate change and keep the state on track to meet its goals of achieving 50% emissions reductions by 2030 and net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. Massachusetts communities have three model building codes to choose from. Until 2022, there were only two options, a base code that sets a minimum standard and a stretch code with more stringent energy efficiency standards. Milton, along with 299 other Massachusetts communities, adopted the stretch code as a prerequisite to becoming a green community in 2010. A year ago, a new opt-in specialized code was added to better align the stretch code with Massachusetts' strategy to reach net zero emissions by 2050. So broadly speaking, this strategy is to transition the electric grid to clean renewable energy sources and in parallel, transition fossil fuel technologies in vehicles, buildings, and industry to predominantly electric technologies. And while 2050 may seem far away, today's new construction will still be in use then. To stay on track, fossil fuel equipment needs to be overwhelmingly replaced with electric technologies when it reaches end of life. So that's by way of background. The incremental requirements in the specialized code that we're asking to bring to town meeting support electrification and apply only to new construction, not to renovations or additions. At a high level, they are pre-wiring for future electrification. So new buildings that use fossil fuels must pre-wire for things like EV chargers and heat pumps. On-site solar, new buildings that use fossil fuels must install rooftop solar with some limited exceptions for shading. And then large new homes over 4,000 square feet must meet exemplary performance standards. They need to be either all-electric or certified zero energy. And new large multifamily over 12,000 square feet must also use passive house compliance pathways. So we see these code changes as a consumer protection, reducing energy costs and removing obstacles to future necessary electrification. In its first year, 31 communities representing 25% of the state's population have adopted the specialized code and many of those with unanimous or near unanimous votes at town meeting. Now, we recognize that building codes are a complex topic and we are still learning about this ourselves. We know the town residents and staff will need time to better understand the content and impact of these code changes. And we do look forward to collaborating respectfully with you and residents of all perspectives in this learning process between now and May. If adopted in May, the code would not come into force until January 2025, and that gives additional time for training and planning. Given the long lead time for the code changes to come in force and the potential for significant new development from 40Bs and the MBTA zoning changes, we believe it's important to have a robust public discussion about code updates now. And we've seen the, the sort of climate aspect of new development brought up in many of the comments about the MBTA law. So we hope that you'll give the town a chance to make a timely and thoughtful decision by adding it to the upcoming town meeting warrant. And we've provided language for a potential article in the packet. So I'll stop there and happy to answer questions as best as I can.
Thank you, Mr. Hasha. Comments or questions from the members? Mr. Zoll.
Thank you, Mr. Hasha. I'm very supportive of this, but climate change is the preeminent threat to the planet. And I think anything that we can do, as, as, you didn't note in your notes, but you did note in your letter, 98% of Milton emissions come from buildings and vehicles, and this would go a long way to reducing our, our climate footprint. My question for you is, I'm curious if you took this also to the planning board as it's a zoning, or did you come straight to the select board?
We came straight to you. We're learning about this very quickly as we, it sort of became clear to us how little time we had to get this done over the next 12 months.
I appreciate that. I would encourage you to go to the planning board also to talk to them about it because I think it would at least be important to get their, their thoughts about it and hopefully their buy-in. But I'm supportive of this and would be interested in, in getting an article in the next warrant if possible.
Yes, we meant what we said about this being a beginning of a discussion. We certainly welcome all perspectives and also advice about how to facilitate a thoughtful process.
Mr. Chair, I just want to, it is not, it isn't zoning?
It's not zoning.
It affects buildings and development, but it's not a change of the town zoning bylaw.
Thank you.
But obviously, the planning board.
Still get to play the new guy card for a little bit.
So, so I see we have Josh Eckert-Lee, who I think is in the planning department. So, and he has his hand up. So I don't know if he's supposed to participate in this discussion. But, but in, but well, I assume he's member of town staff, right? So, so, but let's hear first from Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've been aware that we knew this was going to come, you might remember, Mr. Chair, I believe this will predate Mr. Zoll. Mr. Prandak came before us, before he left for Brookline. This is one of the things he spoke about. And my concern is just that, I don't know if, if Mr. Milano's already spoken with the current building inspector and inspection services people. I just want to make sure that any tweaks or anything that they needed could, because they are the ones who bear the brunt of all these permits, all these approvals. It doesn't go to the planning board, it doesn't go to planning staff, it actually goes to inspection services.
Richard, I think it's a good point, and I was actually going to, along those lines, suggest that we have Mr. Achu come in to our next meeting to address this and answer any questions from the town staff perspective.
So can I get, answer one?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
So I'm fine with that. So my only thought is I'd be more comfortable waiting till he comes in and speaks to this. I know Bill Ritchie, before he left, he and Joe did a lot on this. I'd just be more comfortable wanting this one, I hear what his local expertise and input is regarding this, that's all.
Other, other comments or questions?
A quick question is, what's our timing on the, with the warrant?
So the warrant closes officially on the 17th. So a suggestion that, that I was going to make is if, if there's interest in this, an interest in considering it, we might have this proposed warrant article go to town council in the interim. And so that if, so we have something that we could act on if the board wants to act on it after hearing from our, our building inspector, Mr. Achu. So, Richard?
I'd be fine with that, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Musto.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you're doing on this. Thank you for that. It sounds like this is definitely a newer thing. It's been out about a year, correct? You mentioned the, the 98% emissions from cars and buildings in Milton. Do you know what the split is?
It's, it is, so the, the greenhouse gas inventory that was completed for 2022 is on the Climate Action Planning Committee page. So I'll refer you there for the exact number. It's a little more than half, a little more than half of that 98% is transportation, little sort of 40, 45% buildings. Although about half, and this, this is like my estimate, so even less reliable, about half that transportation emission is cut through traffic. So a lot of similarly sized towns that don't have highways see their residential buildings as the primary source of emissions. And I think they are the primary source of emissions that we as Milton residents can influence directly.
Okay. Have we spoken to any, I know the building commissioner, we're going to bring him in. Have you spoken with any contractors to get a feel for what this means in terms of their work? And I know there was a study that you had in there, in the information, I looked at that, looks like it was a study in Worcester. And Worcester's different pricing than Boston. So, and it looked like it was, you know, maybe 2022, maybe or something.
Do you mean the Wentworth MIT study?
It was in the DOE-R, they cited some study. I looked at that.
Yeah, so I would not put myself forward as an expert on any of this. And I think the, the way I'd like to frame the request is, given, given that it's a minimum of a 12-month process and the potential for new development in the near future, I think that we can learn what we need to know to make a good decision on, on, on this article in the next four months. And then there will be an additional six months for town staff to, to train and plan for the zoning to come in force. And so it's really a decision to allow the town to have that robust public discussion. I think it's hard to get folks to focus on things that aren't coming up for a vote. And I think this is worthy of a vote. I would not be surprised if we learn material, new things about its merits between now and May. So I won't pretend to be an expert.
And the other thing I was going to ask about is I know you had mentioned that it would not affect additions or anything like that. In the, the law, it looked like it does. It looked like anything over 1,000 square feet or additions that exceed 100% of the conditioned floor area, and they could be, excuse me, alterations. And it would cumulative alterations that you'd have to retrofit the whole entire house. So I, I hear what you're saying. I'm just wondering if we need more information before we put, put this forward. I feel like we need some more education around this. Could we, is there a chance that we could, you know, get more information before we put it on for a vote? Or like in terms of, you know, this has been out a year, there's a lot of information out there. I was looking through as much as I could to get prepared for today's meeting, and there's just a lot out there. And so I guess what I'm wondering is, is this something that could go into like the fall town meeting, for instance? And it gives the time to get more information and to, you know, get some input from different contractors and different people into this? And maybe start with like town buildings first or something? And I don't know.
So to address your, your point about the additions over 1,000 square feet, is my understanding, and I could be wrong, but I've had several people confirm this, that those are requirements in the stretch code which we are, which we have already adopted. And I think those, those were the concerns that the, the previous building commissioner brought to the board last year, as that was going into effect in July. And so I do think that the, the provisions in the stretch code are more controversial than the incremental provisions in the specialized code. I'll acknowledge that.
If I could, just in terms of this specific question, it's item eight on the DOE-R. Answer question, answer. Yeah, so.
But it does mention something about if you're under 1,000 versus over and cumulative, if we're on the same page.
But, but I had folks within Sustainable Milton say we need to double check and triple check that particular question. So it's a, it's a totally valid thing to be confused about. As best as I understand currently, those provisions apply in the stretch code, which is already in force in Milton. And yes, it certainly is an option to delay. I, that's not the request I'm bringing. I think that it should be possible to study this adequately in four months.
Ms. Musto, please go.
I was just going to say.
It's okay, don't worry.
I'm just looking at the, I printed out part of these pages. And so I guess obviously it says something here in print. I'm hearing is something a little different, and that's, I guess that's what I'm wondering is, there may be some discrepancies. So I think, I would like to see things ironed out a little tighter before we go and adopt this, because we need to know for the homeowners. You know, we need to have some answers for them. There's talking about solar. I'm wondering, can you, would it always have to be on the roof? Or are people going to have these dishes that you can put on the property? Like, there are a lot of questions to this. And it's only, this more stringent one has been around about a year. So I'm just wondering if we can, that's the only reason I was asking that, is if, because we also need to know what it's going to mean for the homeowners, you know, how this will affect them if they want to do renovation, people want to buy homes, things like that. I would just like to have some more answers.
We can actually see, oh, Ms. Bradley, and then maybe Mr. Eckert-Lee has some answers.
Absolutely. So I just wanted to talk about putting it off to the fall town meeting. There is no fall town meeting. It's a special town meeting. And things that should be taken up at that time are special. And we saw at the December town meeting how the town meeting members reacted to many things being on that agenda. And they closed it down without us voting on, debating multiple articles. I want, I am respectfully asking this board to try and keep the annual town meeting for what the annual town meeting is. And if that means you have to meet a deadline that's earlier, that's what that means. I understand that there are special town meetings, but a special town meeting is for something like the MBTA communities, not for an article that's being brought to us today, January 9th, for a May meeting. Yes, there's a lot of questions, but we reopen the warrant multiple times before May. So please, as we continue to go down this path, can we not try and push things off and actually continue to tackle things when they should be tackled? I just don't, I, I was, not going to lie, very happy that we adjourned in December. I was very happy. I was in finals, I needed to buy gifts, there was a lot going on, right? I'm just one person. But that was a special town meeting. The fall town meeting, also a special town meeting. Any town meeting that's not in April or May is a special town meeting. And there's got to be a reason why we're opening it up. So with all due respect, Ms. Musto, I am just exhausted of pushing things out because there's 900 questions. I'm sure Mr. Hasha and the rest of Sustainable Milton and our own attorney that works for the town will get back to us on some of these questions. But I also know that not every question needs to be answered, and I am okay with that, because I trust the people that are writing things. And so for me to hear you say, push this off till the fall, I am, there's a part of me that just went, oh, my heavens to Pete inside. So I just want to say, I want this to go forward in May when it should go forward.
So I just wanna say, I want this to go forward in May when it should go forward. Thank you for bringing it here in January. And I'm happy to make a motion, but I will not right now because there's people that wanna speak, but I am happy to make that motion.
Now, let's go to Mr. Zoll and then Ms. Musto.
Yeah, just, um, very, very quick. The climate crisis cannot wait. We have four months between now and May. That's plenty of time. I'm sure Sustainable Milton would, will be providing us with lots of opportunities to learn more about this. The idea that we, uh, I just wanna echo a member Bradley's points. We can't, uh, always delay because we don't know, understand 100% of something that's gonna happen four months from now. We've got plenty of time to learn about this. This is a critical issue for everyone in this town, everyone in the world. Uh, and I'm grateful to Sustainable Milton for putting this suggestion forward. I, uh, think that the chair's suggestion and Mr. Wells' suggestion that we hear from council and others, uh, in, in advance is helpful. But I, there's, there's literally no reason that we, we're, we're all grownups. We, we all have the ability to read and research and learn. Everybody in town, well, all the grownups have that same ability. So let's just, let's, 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 um, let's not again, uh, delay on something as critical as climate change. Thank you.
Ms. Musto?
Thank you. Um, I'm not trying to delay on climate change. That's not the issue at all. And I can appreciate what you said, Ms. Bradley. I'm just saying that we need more information. So if you are gonna put it on, which it sounds like you guys want to do, I think it's very important that we get these answers. So I think I would urge you to do forums where, for the public, because it's the homeowners that will incur some of these costs and builders that do renovations and things like that. Those are the people that we need to get these answers for. Because, you know, even us talking here, there seem like there are some discrepancies that we don't know 100%. And yes, we don't need to know everything 100%, but we need to know what the impact is gonna be to the homeowner, to the builder. Those are very important. So I think that piece of it's very important. Thank you.
And Mr. Eckert Lee, did you wanna, do you have some answers for us or, uh, or more, or more questions?
Uh, no, no questions here.
Josh Eckert Lee from our planning department.
Josh Eckert Lee, I'm the Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development. Um, I, I've been working with Sustainable Milton, um, gave them a sort of informational talk the other week on this subject, uh, but also wanted to present briefly just the fact that town staff is very aware of this article being proposed. Commissioner Achu and I have discussed this, um, Director Zerwinski and I as well. So town staff is aware and, and interested in, in seeing this as a way to meet some of the sort of climate goals that we're trying to work towards. Um, and our department, engineering, um, Jack Turner, the environmental coordinator, and I've been working closely on, um, you know, advocating for this within town hall and have, have, you know, extended our services and our willingness to provide some of those informational forums, Ms. Ms. Musto, that you requested. So, um, in, in addition to or in concert with Sustainable Milton, um, town staff are very happy to host some of these informational sessions because the commissioner is well aware of these guidelines as our inspection service of the staff. And, uh, we're all here to try and make sure it's as clear as possible for residents, homeowners, contractors. So I, I also will say, um, to, to answer a question on, on a sort of a proposed or alleged discrepancy, um, the, it is the stretch code that we're already a part of that establishes the, um, sort of not just new builds, but additions. And that language is consistent in the Optin Stretch Code, um, this for specialized stretch code. So not a discrepancy there, just, uh, it's the same in both the stretch and the specialized.
So no change from the, no change from the stretch?
No, no, no change from the, the stretch there. The specialized is, is really focused on these sort of three pathways to, um, effectively net zero, um, either, um, sort of a mixed fuel building that has electric ready components, um, an all-electric component or a net zero, sort of hers rating, a zero, um, pathway. But don't wanna get too into the, into the details. However, I do wanna say we're also, as staff, participating in coalition work and educational sort of forum with the Building Electrification Accelerator Program, which has been really useful for technical assistance on programs like this, as well as our recent Seoul Smart Bronze designation last year that also has, uh, technical assistance, uh, sort of support for projects like this. So we've got a lot of informational resources out there that we can fund the depths of.
Other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Bradley?
No, I'm gonna make a motion, so please speak.
Well, if I could ask, uh, in, in terms of the motion, I, 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 I would like to hear from Commissioner Achu personally, uh, before, before actually voting. And I would actually like to have had town council look through the article. So, so if it, if it, if it makes sense to everyone, if we could put this on for the next meeting, have, um, Josh maybe make a presentation on some of the outstanding items, have Commissioner Achu here and have a, an article that's been, that's been reviewed by town council, then I'll, I'll feel better in a position, be in a better position to vote at that point. Ms. Bradley?
So I just have a technical question. Can we do that? Because the warrant's closing, so we would have to open the warrant. Do, uh, do, I'm just trying to parliamentary think about this.
My read of it, and I'll let the board kind of make its, um, how it wants to treat these. The request for the warrant deadline is to submit articles. I would say Sustainable Milton has submitted an article to the select board. Where Sustainable Milton themselves can't put the article on the warrant, the board would be the sponsoring entity and it would be discussing that at its next meeting. So the article's been received by that deadline of the 17th.
Of the 17th. So if we don't vote on it until our next meeting, we are still within the guidelines of putting it on the warrant?
Yeah, it will have been received to our office.
Yeah, we're not, we're not closing the warrant tonight.
That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, we're not closing the warrant tonight. So, um, all right. So does that make sense as a path forward? Um, so next meeting on the 23rd, right? We'll have Mr. Hasha, hopefully you, you're available and Mr. Eckert Lee and Commissioner Achu and, and, um, and anyone else who can be helpful on this issue. And, and, and hopefully town council will have, have had a chance to put, to vet this, this proposed article so we can have something actually to, to vote on. Does that all make sense?
It works.
All right. Great. Mr. Hasha, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for all of this information. Uh, item? And thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
Uh, item eight is, uh, discussion, uh, update approval warrant articles for annual town meeting on May 6th, uh, 2024. Um, this was on for two reasons. One, we had, uh, three articles, three articles from our last town meeting, uh, four articles, four articles from our last town meeting, uh, that we didn't get to. So we could, we could discuss those. And then, um, uh, the chair of the planning board asked me to put on, which, which we have a, a placeholder article, um, for zoning by law related to MBT communities, although I don't, I don't know that we've received anything. Um, this, this was before their meeting. She, she'd asked me to put that on there just in case they had anything, so.
But there's nothing, right?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
They discussed it at length and have some, in our meeting, um, throughout the month of January, but nothing has been submitted yet.
All right. Um, so, uh, those are the, that's, that's, that's item eight and item eight A. Comments or questions? Ms. Zoll?
Is there, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there any reason we shouldn't just sort of unmask, put the articles that we had approved that didn't get voted on, uh, into the next warrant?
So there were three that we put on, that, that, uh, there were three that, one from the local historic district article. We need to find out whether that's still gonna be in play to move, because that was, they had, they were gonna defer that anyways. Um, there was the posting and recording of, uh, and I, I believe the, I believe we wanna go forward with that.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Certainly the proponent, the initial proponent does, I think. And then.
The weapons.
There was the estuary, which is definitely the, uh, the proponents, the conservation commission wants to move forward with that. Uh, and then we have a citizen petition, which.
Wouldn't be.
Which really should, that needs to go on. You know, that needs to go on.
Do they don't have to resubmit it or?
Uh, we'll have to check with town council, but I wouldn't think so. I wouldn't think so. I mean, uh, they, they, for, for an annual town meeting, you only need 10 signatures. For a special town meeting, you need 100 or 150, and they got the 100 or 150. So.
Okay.
So I, so I, I think, I think we, we have an obligation. Mr. Wells, there's, thank, thank you for jumping in and stopping my stammering here.
So I'm gonna make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we forward three of the four that you mentioned. I'll, I'll just hold off on the, on the, um, you just, I already slipped my mind.
The local historic?
We're not sure if they wanna, but I'll make a motion to move those other three to place them back on the annual town meeting.
So that would be the estuary, um, the, um, posting and recording meetings, um, the, and the citizens petition.
I'll second that.
Yeah, and they, you, you said the, um, conservation one, right? Correct?
Conservation, yeah, the estuary, I said the conservation one. But I don't know that we should move forward on the local historic because we need to hear from them.
Okay.
So, so, so the motion is for those three articles to place on the warrant.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Um, all's in favor of Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Mr. Zoll is yes. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask?
Yes, Mr.?
If you only, I, if there's any warrant articles that members are interested in and potentially kicking around, if you have any thoughts, please let me know so we can include that on the list. Obviously, we will put on all the recurring budgetary and other, you know, normal annual town meeting business articles. Those will automatically go on and be presented next, at our next meeting. But if there's anything else that members are interested in including, please, um, please let me know.
Ms. Bradley?
No.
Oh, I thought I had something. Oh, okay. All right, all right, okay.
She's got some budget stuff she'll hope to put on the warrant.
No, I was just joking, trying to lighten the mood.
There we go. Lightened, enlightened it is. All right. Anything else on item eight? Nothing on item eight. Moving on to item nine, discussion update FY 2025 budget. Ms. Bradley or Ms. Andrew or Mr. Milano?
I'm gonna hand this right over to Mr. Milano because we have not met since the last.
Correct.
Select board meeting we had.
Still, uh, working towards, um, and working with the folks at the school department on, um, working to get a budget recommendation together. We'll be following up with everybody for another joint finance committee meeting, um, within a week or two. Uh, I just did wanna make note of, and it was referenced earlier, the governor did cut, um, state budget appropriations, um, by $375 million. It's quite unusual. Uh, hadn't happened since 2016. And the news coming out of Beacon Hill related to the state's finances has not been, um, great news of late. And, uh, the governor typically releases the, the upcoming fiscal year budget, uh, in January. We expect that the third week of the month. Um, you know, optimistic that all the state aid that the town has relied upon and all the state aid related to schools that has been increasing thanks to Student Opportunity Act, um, you know, are obviously very optimistic that that will come through again in fiscal 25. But as the tone has shifted slightly on Beacon Hill, um, we are waiting with a little bated breath just to see that that is confirmed. So hopefully we'll get some good news, uh, later this month. And, um, also related to the budget, we did receive another, um, deposit of money for roads. $100 million was allocated to cities and towns for road projects, which translates to about $300,000 for the town of Milton. Chapter 90 money that we get every year, which goes directly to roads is about $600,000 a year. Um, and so we received another $300,000 from the state. So that is a good news item on the fiscal 25 budget, but just, um, the news out of Beacon Hill has not been as optimistic as it had been the last couple of budget years. So just something to keep an eye on.
Mr. Milano, do we, has the warrant committee received the budgets?
We provided preliminary budgets in December.
In December? Okay. That's as, as, as we should and as our obligation is to do that. Okay. Great. All right. Anything else on item nine? Item 10, discussion update approval, select board landing committee recommendation for Lot B proposals. Mr. Wells, is this, this is you, I assume?
Mr. Chair, I'll let Mr. Milano speak first and then I'll add, um, I'll go from there.
Great.
Uh, thank you.
If that's okay.
Yeah, that, that works. Uh, the landing committee met, uh, right before the holiday, so December 22nd, I think, to, um, evaluate the proposals received for Lot B. Uh, two proposals received, one was from Dexter Southfield and the, for their rowing program, and the other was from the Milton Yacht Club, uh, for boat storage that they typically have held there. The Dexter Southfield proposal included, um, in-kind benefits such as installation of a low-profile dock for public use and, um, a fiscal contribution of, um, $20,000. The yacht club's, um, proposal for lease payments was $10,000 and, um, they did offer in-kind, um, contributions related to the ongoing maintenance and work that they, the yacht club has historically provided down, um, at the landing. Uh, the landing committee's recommendation to this board is to move forward, um, and then to negotiations with Dexter Southfield for a lot B, um, with the caveat that, um, the town and myself, I guess, and also engage in the yacht club in terms of boat storage at the landing, you know, if Lot A works, what would that look like? So that we're, you know, continuing to move forward, um, space at the landing that works for all of these parties that are interested in it. Um, so that has been the recommendation of the landing committee to move forward Dexter Southfield in terms of a lease for Lot B and engage with the yacht club on boat storage on Lot A to, to maintain that relationship. And I'll defer to Mr. Wells or Ms. Musto for any additional color commentary.
Mr. Wells, Ms. Musto?
No, he, I, I agree with Nick. I mean, um, I'll actually mention Ms. Bradley as well, who attended the last face-to-face meeting between Mr. Milano, myself and, and the leadership of the Milton Yacht Club. And I said then, and I will reiterate now, I know that we got some correspondence today that is not, much of that is not factual, but, um, I'm committed to trying to make this work. I think that, um, we have a plan that can make this work for them to continue to store boats at Lot A. Right now, we did agree that, um, there are ten at will currently, and we'll just move forward that way, um, continuing them to do the same. And as, if, if, uh, Ms. Milano's able to negotiate a lease, then, um, we will figure out a way to make this work to move the boat storage of the yacht club from Lot B to Lot A. And I do think it's something that will work. And that's, that's about it. I would, it was unanimous vote, Mr. Chair, and I think that the final thing I would say is that between this lease and the Napa's at Rowing Club lease, this is also gonna give us some money to do some of the capital upgrades that we need to do down there to include like some outside electrical outlets, plumbing, things like that, that are, you know, solely needed. Hopefully we can bank a few dollars, we can perhaps build some new public restrooms down there in the next couple of years. That's pretty much all I have to say on it.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Comments or questions? Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I also just wanted to say as a member of the landing committee, um, definitely felt that we wanna try to do what we can to try to keep the yacht club down there and make every effort to work with them and see if we can keep them on, um, you know, perhaps Lot A. Uh, and I hope that Mr. Milano will work towards that, working with all entities and see what we can accomplish. Because I think the sentiment, um, is to really try to keep all three entities there. Definitely a strong sentiment about that, so.
So, so would it, and I'll take other comments, question, I just wanna ask, would it make sense to make a motion along the lines of, um, approving of the landing committee's recommendation with respect to Dexter Southfield on Lot B and, and continuing to work with the Milton Yacht Club with respect to boat storage on Lot A? Is that, is that the, the idea? Does that make sense?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wells? Yes.
I think that's a little premature. I think that would be the vote. But I think what we should do now is to allow Ms. Milano to continue to work on a lease agreement with Dexter Southfield, come back to the board, um, and continue to meet with the yacht club as well and come back to the board with a vote to be taken, um, sometime in the next few weeks.
So you're not looking for a vote?
No, I don't wanna vote tonight until he works out that lease. I think that's more important.
All right. Other comments or questions? Oh, Ms. Musto and then Mr. Zoll.
Sure. And just to, um, have Mr. Milano continue to work with the yacht club and see what we can accomplish. Cause we'd like to keep them there.
Mr. Zulish?
Thank you. Not, not going to add too much. Just, you know, I think Mr. Wells alluded to potential capital improvements in the landing. So just to, you know, this is a source of revenue for the town, which is great. It's great that we're getting what is more of a market rate, I think, for the space. Obviously, you know, any capital improvements to any part of town, we want to look at that as a, as a select board and, and make those determinations, you know, as this body, you know, to avoid the confusion that seemed to happen around the fence. Just feel like it's necessary to point that out. But I, I'm glad that the committee voted unanimously. And well, you know, I think waiting for Nick to finish the negotiation makes sense. Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Musto?
Thank you. As far as any type of improvements down there, would it have to go to both the planning board and the select board according to that revolving fund?
No, and so there are, the revolving fund you're referencing was set up but never put into place. There are two revolving funds related to the landing. And one of them is, was a town meeting action and it places the control. It's for essentially whenever the town leases area, if you take a town meeting vote, the governmental entity that controls that land can have a revolving fund. That's disposable to use the rents earned to go back into the upkeep. And that's the, that's the revolving fund that's been set up for the landing. There was town meeting action on a different kind of fund to be administered by the select board and the planning board related to the Milton Village District, I believe. That the Attorney General ended up not approving as a legal bylaw for revolving fund. So that's the history on that. Thank you for circling back on it.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Wells, oh, Ms. Bradley and then Mr. Wells.
That was good.
Yeah, Mr. Wells and then Ms. Bradley.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Chair. The reason I say this is that they were both from the Napa's Rowing Club and the yacht club. And I expect from Dexter, and I know it was Nick can refresh me, I believe it was in, some of their questions prior to their submitted was things specifically like upgrading the outside electric enhancement. There's only one water, there's only one water meter down there now. Those are just things that we all have normally, all our businesses and homes have. Those are things we're probably going to have to address. And I could see some of these coming up in the negotiations. So at least now we'll have a way that we can be able to approve them in front of them. So that's it. About all I have to say.
Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a few things to say. One, I negotiated in good faith with the Milton Yacht Club. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that I fully expect the Milton Yacht Club to stay there. I negotiated with them. I know how much they came, they came up higher than I even expected them to come up. They are doing everything in their power to stay in that space. I understand that folks don't like the look of it. And I'm pretty sure we can figure something out to, to work with that. But I, I will not vote or support anything that takes the Milton Yacht Club out of the town of Milton. We often talk on this committee. I've listened to, I can't tell you how many members tell me the history of 900 people that live before me and why we do the things we do. The Milton Yacht Club has been here for over 100 years. I am in no way, shape or form ready to get rid of them. I have voted to support other things that are here that I have no idea what they do, but they're here and they're part of our fabric. This is part of our fabric. And so I will not support anything that tells the Milton Yacht Club that they are no longer welcome on their own riverbank. That being said, I've now been a member of this committee for almost two years. We often rotate who is on select board committees. This is a select board committee. I have no idea who the members are, Mr. Chair. None. I have no idea how they got appointed because none of the members besides Ms. Musto and Mr. Wells have been appointed since I started. I would like to know why the farmer's market does not have a representative on the Milton Landing Committee. I would like to know why the lower mills residential business folks don't have a representative on this committee. I would like to know what it is that's actually happening down there. And so this wonderful bid from an prestigious school in Boston has just outbid a piece of our fabric in the town of Milton. Trust me, I often ask for more money trees. Ask Nick. I am all about finding money wherever we can find money. That is not what I'm talking about tonight. What I'm talking about tonight is the fact that, as Member Zoll referenced, there are things happening on the landing committee that we have no idea about. There was fencing put in that the select board never approved, that nobody approved for us to pay for. I'm the chair of the finance committee. I knew nothing about it at all. That to me does not instill great communication between a select board committee and the select board. This is not a rogue ad hoc committee. This is a committee that we, the select board, put together because we felt it was important. And so on the next meeting, Mr. Chair, I would like for us to really dive into this. And I know it's going to be sticky and it's going to be gross and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of balls that are taken home. But I would really like for us to sit down and talk about what is happening and why there's not somebody from the farmer's market on there. Why is there not somebody from this business district on there? There are a lot of things I think that are happening down there that I don't know is 100% fair. And, and I'm just going to say that. The Milton Yacht Committee came into the town hall and they negotiated in really good faith. And they were honest and they gave us more than I was thinking. And I just want to say to them out there that I support you and I understand that you thought that this was in good faith. And it would be a shame that this town would get rid of something like the yacht club. So that's, that's my request for you for next meeting or whenever it is. But, but I'm happy we're not voting on it tonight. Thank you for that, Member Wells, for not asking for us to vote on this tonight.
So we can certainly put it on the agenda. A more broad agenda item for the landing committee for next, next meeting. And we'll make sure, do our utmost to make sure that it's not, that it's not gross in any way. But let me, before, before we go to Mr. Wells, let me, let me just, let me just ask, when you say Ms. Bradley, you want to, you'll not vote for anything to move them off, to move them out, does that mean move them off of lot B or move them off of lot B and lot A?
Nope. So what it means is they need to be able to make revenue. And so in order for them to make revenue, they have to have revenue for storing boats. That's their livelihood, right? So if, I don't care what lot, we can put it on D E F. I really don't care. And Ms. Musto understands because she's smiling at me right now.
Just want a workable solution.
I want a workable solution where we can make sure that the boats, and I'll even get my kids out there, we'll build like a Chinese screen or something to cover them. But, but I don't, I don't think it's fair that we just say enough is enough. And I think Ms. Musto agrees.
If we go to Mr. Wells and then Ms. Musto.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know where Ms. Bradley's coming from. I never said, I've never insinuated. On a prior RFP, this board voted. Mr. Malano negotiated and this board voted to give them a 10-year lease on the building. They significantly less fee than, than any of the other lots. We had interests in other bidders who would have paid more money, which I was against because the landing committee has nothing to do with the farmer's market, has nothing to do with the, that's the other committee that was created. The landing committee's charge is just water-dependent use, period. And I, you heard me say in front of your face, Erin, you heard me say it again tonight. I've gone out of my way and will continue to go out of my way to try and make it feasible for all of them there. So I, I don't know what you're going off about that someone's trying to get rid of them. No one has realized the historic value of the yacht club more than I have, which is why we are where we are right now. So I'm fine with whatever you want to do, Mr. Chair. But I don't, I'd rather let Mr. Malano negotiate with both and then we will come back with a recommendation that I believe will be acceptable to everyone. And we'll be able to not only welcome a new tenant, but we'll be able to maintain the operations of the long-term existing tenant that has been there.
Sounds like that process is the consensus of the board. Ms. Musto?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. To Ms. Bradley's point about the yacht club and commitment to keeping them there, that is exactly what I was thinking is, and I said that at the meeting, that we want to keep them there. And as far as the boat storage, I know there was one talk at one time of the town making, you know, getting revenue from that. But I agree that they need to draw some revenue for themselves. And so I would fully support if we can work something out with them on, you know, maybe lot A, that they could do that. But I think, you know, again, we have to have Mr. Malano talk with all the entities before we, you know, take a vote on any of that. So I would support that as well. Thank you.
Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, as a select board, have revamped multiple committees that serve under us, their charge and what they're doing. And I think that maybe this is a time that we might want to look at that because there is a bigger picture down there than just the waterway. So there's a lot of folks that, that, that kind of impact that area. And so, you know, other charges have been looked at and maybe this is one of those times. So thank you.
All right. Put that on the agenda for the 23rd. Anything else on this, Mr. Malano? Do you have what you need?
Yes, if the board, I'm hearing a consensus that I can, I will begin negotiations and I will report back.
Thank you.
I think that's right. I don't, I don't think you need a vote to accept a proposal in order to be, in order to negotiate. I think that's right. Okay, all right. And anything else on, on item 10? Item 11, discussion approval, board and committee appointments, Airplane Noise Advisory Committee reappointment.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we reappoint Raju Pathak to the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee for a term to expire on June 30th, 2024.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All's in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, sorry, Mr. Chair.
That's fine. Mr. Zulish?
Yes.
And Ms. Zulish, yes. Okay. Item 12, discussion update, community forum regarding Israel, Palestine and the war in Gaza, February 4th, 2024. This grew out of our discussions last fall. The Milton Interfaith Clergy Association, led by Reverend Lisa Ward and Rabbi Benjamin and, and others, have taken the lead on this, along with Pat Latimore of our Equity Committee and Milton Muslim Neighbors and several others. And they are planning for a forum with our support. And tentatively scheduled to be at the Pierce Auditorium on February 4th. The thinking is maybe between 3:00 and 5:00. I think that's a Sunday. So that's the current view. There is a flyer that I think you would have received, you should have received. I don't know, Nick, if, if, maybe that wasn't circulated.
No.
But it's, does everyone agree with the, with pursuing this? It's really a MICA-sponsored, Milton Interfaith Clergy Association-sponsored event at this point, just with our assistance.
Sorry, sorry, church estate, sorry.
But just with our, with our involvement.
But do we need a vote or anything like that?
No, no, this is really just an update, making sure everyone's on the same page. Everyone knows what, what we're doing and, and what's, what's happening. So, and more to come on the specifics on this. But it's really Reverend Ward who is, who, along with several others, who are really taking the laboring oar on, on getting this organized. So, Mr. Zulish?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm glad this is happening. Did I turn my stuff off? No, come on, I'm good. Yeah. I, I think we should just make sure that we're letting the chief know about that and think about making sure that we have adequate police presence. I know we can all treat each other very civilly, but this is an issue that we think passionately would be good to have. And P D present, thank you.
And that discussion has, has been, has been had as well.
That's what I'm working on.
Anything else on this? Item 13, letter of support for the council and agent application of the community transit grant program for a 14-passenger wheelchair accessible minibus.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of support for the council and agents' application to the community.
Oh. Richard's dog is seconding you.
Community transit grant program for a 14-passenger wheelchair accessible minibus.
She heard voices being raised. Now she's sitting next to me.
That was classic.
Motion's been made.
I'll second.
And seconded. All's in favor?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley, Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish?
Yes.
And Ms. Zulish, yes. Item 14, discussion approval, no place, no place for hate proclamation to be read on Monday, January 15th, 2024 in honor of, honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The event is being scheduled for between 6:30 and 8:00 at the Concord Baptist Church.
Wait, wait, slow down. Where, what church?
And you'll, you'll see.
West, West Concord Baptist.
Thank you, West Concord.
Yeah, West Concord Baptist.
Thank you.
Baptist church. And I believe it's 6:30 to 8:00, but we have a flyer on that as well, that if we haven't circulated, we will, at which the no place for hate proclamation will be read. So typically our, we need to approve that on a name of this.
I'll make a motion to approve the no place for hate proclamation to be read on Monday, January 15th, 2024 in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All's in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish?
Yes.
And Ms. Zulish, yes. Item 15, discussion approval of meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, you want to do it?
You can get.
I wasn't at the first one, so we can't do it collectively.
So you want to split it. Okay, so, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended meeting minutes for November 3rd, 2023.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All's in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish? And Mr. Zulish, yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Sorry. To approve the amended meeting minutes for November 9th, November 14th and November 28th, 2023.
Motion for maiden seconded. Any further discussion? All's in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish?
Yes.
And Ms. Zulish, yes. Item 16, discussion approval of a donation to Milton Coalition.
I'll move to accept the donation to the Milton Coalition for $100 from Anthony Chikello and Christine Marie Kemp.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All's in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish?
Yes.
And Ms. Zulish, yes. Mr. Malano, Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of items this evening. The Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting is next Friday. And Saturday, if you don't get their emails, to inbox what you should. Okay, so if you're interested in, in attending, please let us know. We can register you. The Friday workshops are generally pretty good, a good take if any of the items speak to you. I'll be attending and we'll have some department heads there as well. The town has accepted into a program with MAPC called REACH, which is a partnership run with MAPC, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, and the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston that will bring teams from different municipalities together to work on, learn about and strategize on racial equity issues. So it'll be a series of workshops at the Fed starting in February for eight months. And that, actually Josh Eckhart Lee, who was with us earlier, was the one who spotted it and helped shepherd the application through. So thanks to him. And we have an internal DEI committee made up of Josh, Sky Barubi, our Assistant Town Engineer, Will Adamsick, Library Director, and Carla, we are HR Director, who have been running with this issue. So I appreciate them for their work on it. And what else do I want to mention? We have a new cold enforcement officer, Markellian Verduffie, who started in December. That position had been vacant for some time now. So we're excited to have Kelly aboard. He's been working hard in there. Lots of learn, but he's been doing great so far. And that's it for me this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Malano. Item 18, the Chair's Report. I'll defer anything on the Chair's Report to move us along. Is there anything? Oh, Ms. Bradley?
No, not on the Chair's Report, the next one.
Okay, great. Item 19, public comment response. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. So one of the wonderful neighbors in town came and spoke tonight about the MBTA zoning. I'm specifically referring to the gentleman who spoke about the 40B that is being built in East Milton. And I just wanted to clarify for the record, and please, those of you that know more than me, please make sure that I am correct. But it's my understanding that that proposal was first presented with lower was first presented with lower floors, so a lower building, less floors, and the residents of East Milton fought that. And then, the developer went to the state and the developer won, and the developer created a larger building with more units. This is exactly what we are talking about when we talk about MBTA zoning and why it is so important to have local control. And so, I just wanted to say that this did not come out because of a 40B thing. They had presented a much smaller footprint at the beginning, and because of the fight that happened there, they ended up with a much larger building. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Zoll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I said, I think, all I need to say about MBTA communities. I did want to address the neighbors of Governor's Road who came to talk. I'm certainly hopeful that we'll put their, them as an item on our next agenda. And I know, I wanted to ask Mr. Milano, because I know there's a meeting scheduled with them and Traffic Commission, is that going to happen before our, are we going to get a report back from that before that meeting? The Traffic Commission is looking at the last week of the month. I think they're penciling in the 25th, so that would be after our next meeting. And whether the Governor's Road folks would be amenable to coming at our following meeting after the Traffic Commission makes a recommendation, or, but we can, I can work that out with the residents on that issue. The Beta Group has been out there, they've been studying the issue. We had Beta Group, our traffic engineers, meet with the Governor's Road residents at Town Hall to go through the issues that they've been seeing. And so, they'll be reporting to the Traffic Commission with their recommendations, and then the Traffic Commission typically makes their recommendations to this board. So, that's, the current sequence of events would be Beta Group reports to Traffic Commission, Governor's Road residents will obviously be there and able to speak, and then that Traffic Commission will report their recommendations to this board, is the typical rhythm on these issues. So, I think, thank you, Mr. Milano, as long as they're okay with postponing until February 13th, I think they've waited for 40 years for action on this, and hopefully waiting until, waiting a couple more weeks won't hurt too much, but you just, you know, you really do want to see action on this as quickly as possible. And I just want to acknowledge too, I know that I've spoke offline with those folks. I know Member Wells also had a chance to meet with them, and I think Member Zulish is going to be talking with them tomorrow, so it's, I think, is that true?
Tomorrow morning, we'll have, we're going to meet with them and a representative from the Police Department and also the director, the head of the DPW.
So, good. I hope that they're all feeling heard, and I was really glad, sad and glad to see so many people turn out tonight for advocating for their neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Wells? Richard?
Mr. Wells?
I think you are.
I don't know if I can hear you, Mr. Chair. I lost you.
There you are. Can you hear me now?
I'm going to change headphones, hold on.
Okay, all right. You're on mute, Richard, if you're, I don't know if you're talking, but you're on mute. You're on mute, Richard, if you're, I don't know if you're talking, but you're on mute. There you are.
I'm back, thanks.
Oh, can you hear us?
Just two points.
Okay.
The Governor's Road thing is a longstanding, and I'm not going to, I talked about it a lot tonight, but I, to Ms. Bradley's point on the East Milton project, the building is still the same. The difference is, the original building was less units with a larger mixed-use footprint, and the new design is exclusively units. Actually, I'm sure if Josh or Tim were still here, he'd probably agree that they got more units out of it, again, of the S H R than they would have on the original, on the original plan.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Ms. Musto?
Thank you. Just wanted to also comment on the people that came in from Governor's Road. It was a great showing of support to do something about a longstanding issue. And on the select board, those are probably the major things we hear about is traffic, speed of cars, cut-through traffic especially. So, I think it applies to a lot of streets as well, that, you know, bigger picture for the whole town has to be done as well. And then, I would just say that for the, it makes sense to hear what the Traffic Commission's recommend, specific recommendations are before they come in. And then, when we get to the meetings, maybe we can talk about, do we want to keep that one on the 13th? That's the election day, just wondering for the ballot question.
Oh, that's a good point.
But anyways, I do think it should be the next one if, what's that?
Hold on, let's, we'll have to get to that.
Yeah, but just for this purpose, I think it should be at a subsequent meeting, that to have some to come back, if you want to put it as an agenda item, you know, once we find out with.
On Governor's Road?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And I think just in general, we should think about at some subsequent meeting, talking about, well, that's future, forget it.
Okay.
Keep going.
All right. So, future meeting dates. Item 20, Tuesday, January 23rd, and then February 13th, a very good point raised, because that's an election day, so the question is, do we want to move the meeting maybe to the 6th?
I can't do the 6th.
Okay. Or do we want to move it, maybe we, well, we'll have to move the meet, I think.
We could do it in the car, I won't be there, unless we did during the day.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to have, town buildings will be very active that day.
We could be in the car tomorrow. Nick just agreed.
Well, but let's, why don't we, why don't we table that and see what, you know, Mr. Milano will poll the members.
Just to see if there are any other times as well, I don't know.
Yeah, I think, given the activity and the town activity that day, we may well want to move that meeting. Anything else on future meeting dates? So, we'll have Mr. Milano poll the members and see if we want to move that meeting. We can talk about it again on the 23rd as well. Anything else on that? 21, Future Agenda Items?
We've got a couple.
We have a couple, yeah, we have a couple, and you can always just send me an email or anything.
Yeah, just maybe something about traffic, you know, in general, like, Mr. Berkeley has some ideas, because you, you know, and you were on that too, the Traffic Litigation Committee, just in general, because it seems to be a big problem and throughout the town.
Yep.
A lot of speed, a lot of cut-through, we hear these complaints a lot, so.
Why don't we, why don't we put that on, depending on the size of the agenda for the 23rd, you know, why don't we do?
Yeah, either that or the following one when they come in, if they come in.
Well, he could come in both. He could come in on the general topic of traffic on the 23rd, and then on the subsequent one on the specific item.
Yeah, depending how long the agenda is.
Right, exactly.
We don't want a huge agenda.
That's right, that's right.
You did have that nice report, which was alluded to, that was done in 2020.
Yes.
Right.
It might be worth including that as part of the packet.
Yep, yep, we could do that. We could have an update on that. All right. Executive session, thankfully, because we have people who have been waiting here very patiently for hours, and I apologize for that. I'll move to enter, to adjourn from open session and enter into executive session to discuss litigation strategy with, discuss strategy with respect to litigation filed by the town of Milton versus the Federal Administration, Aviation Administration, Number 22-152, U.S. Court of Appeals, First Circuit. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board, the select board will not return to open session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call vote, all is in favor of Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. I move to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to threatened litigation by a town employee, based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the select board. The select board will not return to open session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor of Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. Oh, I forgot that, okay, but we can still talk about it. I moved to enter into, we're going to do that one last. I'm sorry, flight of ideas. I moved to adjourn from open session, enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to, with respect to, wait a second. No, I got it. All right, that's the last one, all right. I moved to enter, I moved to adjourn from the open session and enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to contract negotiations with non-union personnel of the town administration, the town administrator, the town administrator. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter, I'm okay.
I'm just checking in.
I need a drink of water. Discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board, the select board will not return to open session.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and all is in favor of Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. Did I get them all, Mr. Milano?
Did I hear the collective bargaining one?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, did you get 23?
I didn't get 23. That's the one I didn't get.
Because I'm going to abstain. Okay, go ahead, do that. Are we not, we're not going on that, or are we?
Yes, I will, I will. All right. I moved to enter into, I also moved to enter, to, moved to adjourn from open session and enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Milton Professional Management Association and Milton Firefighters Local 1116. Based on my belief that discussion of these matters in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining possession of, position of the select board, the select board will not return to open session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All is in favor of Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, yes, I'm abstaining on being.
Mr. Zoll? What's that?
He's abstaining on being.
Oh, yes, yes.[1692.56]